Phil Clark, please call and roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Vincent? Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting September 18, 2017. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $152,445.77 and payroll expenses of $252,843.93. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Have a motion by Winters, second by Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item six is the reports from boards and officers. Item A is the Alva Hospital Authority Board Meeting from September 19, 2017. Dr. Hannaford, do you have a report to share with us?
I'll do some highlights from the meeting. Our CEO, Candace Allen, has been chosen as the Northwest Regional Chair for the Oklahoma Hospital Association. Our telemedicine program continues to go very well. Women's health is picking up and we're able to offer mammograms now, so the hospital's excited about that service. We are applying for critical access designation, and if we are able to get that, that'll give us a better reimbursement. You probably saw recently in the newspaper, we have a new physician that was hired, Dr. Hicks, who'll begin in November 1st. He's a general practitioner from Edmond, Oklahoma. And we also have a new PA that will start at the beginning of the new year, January Other than that, we had compliance of a QOPI and had some other approvals of some policies and procedures. I'll ask or answer any of the questions if you have any.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Hannaford? Thank you, Bo. Item B is the Alva Public Library Board Meeting from September 19, 2017. Mr. Eckhart, do you have a report for us?
Relatively routine, fairly short meeting. Talked about some maintenance issues. They had finally got to where they could wax the floors the way they would like to. Kind of makes it look a little more updated. The old wax was a real problem. They had a real hard time getting that. So I guess at some point in time somebody used the wrong kind, so it took a while to get it back to normal. They're looking to replace the new blinds that were damaged before the roof was replaced, some things that have gotten damaged there. They're looking at some cost to replace some more of the LED bulbs. They've replaced a lot of the main floor and now they're looking at the children's area and some of the other areas in the building. They had their fall book sale, lasted three weeks, high demand from the public, went really well. They didn't have an exact number on how much they made, but it was by donation, so it was pretty successful. They did start a new book series called Let's Talk About It. Their first, they had had their first session during that, before that meeting, and it was apparently very successful in their meeting on a routine basis, based on the Gilded Age, novels of the Gilded Age. And then they, last thing, they'd gotten a couple of new computers, but the connections for them weren't quite right, so they're waiting for some proper cords, which should have already been, I'm assuming by now, have been delivered and installed. And that was about it.
Council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? Thank you, Chris. Next item is the Alva Recreation Authority Meeting on September 20, 2017. Mr. Sherman, do you have a report to share with us?
Reviewed the idea and submitted for a share grant to get us a little bit more money for the shade structures that we're trying to get put up out there to help us host some better tournaments and give better quality of area for the people that are sitting out there all day watching those tournaments. Volleyball, volleyball starts here this week, and fall soccer ended with better-than-expected numbers for the total participants. And that was about it, other than that, just routine business.
Council have any questions for Mr. Sherman? The Alva Rain Authority Meeting on October 3, 2017. You have a copy of the minutes in the packet. Some of the highlights, other than their routine business, including reports regarding design and management, location, funding committees, which no action was taken, just reports. They have, Woods County has considered yesterday at their meeting, the COBS Fisher status on the trust indenture, and they did pass that as well, so they'll move forward with, you know, making the changes to the trust indenture to reflect what we approved and what the Woods County Commissioners have approved. I'm happy to, Joe Don, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't have anything to add to that.
I'm happy to try and answer any questions if I can, but like I said, they haven't taken any action, they've just had routine reports. Tourism Tax Meeting on October 4, 2017. Joe Don, I want you to take that one.
Well, this was a special meeting to make up for one that they'd had for the previous month that they didn't have in September due to lack of quorum. They did approve the July and August financials, had applications from the Chamber of Commerce for the secretary, the fund of the secretary, Raid Carpet Country Visitor Guide, and the NWSU rodeo for 2017, were all action items, and they were, they were all approved for the amounts requested. Visitor Center Secretary, not to exceed $6,000. Raid Carpet Visitor, Country Visitor Guide, not to exceed $2,350. And 2017 NWSU Ranger Rodeo, not to exceed $15,000. And those were all approved.
Council have any questions for Mr. Don?
What do they use the Ranger Rodeo for, $15,000? What do they use that?
They use it for advertising and primarily just, primarily advertising.
Stock contractor.
Huh? Stock contractor.
Oh, stock contractor. Did they, I noticed in the paper it talked about the special advertising that we were going to do online. Do you know any more about it?
I don't know.
Okay. They've contracted with a company to put together internet, social media, you know, comprehensive advertising strategy for promoting tourism. They don't have a finished product yet, they're still waiting on that. Timeframes have been extended a little bit beyond from where they were originally anticipated, but that's still moving forward. Any other questions regarding the tourism committee? Okay. Next item is the Alva Airport Commission Meeting on October 10, 2017. In addition to the routine business, approval of minutes and city council report, manager's report, we did receive an update on lighting at the T-hangers. At the previous month's meeting, there was approval to go ahead and light, or put lights in around the T-hangers with OG&E. OG&E came back with an option for consideration, which we discussed at the last meeting, and it, the project for lighting is moving forward with some modifications, slight modifications on where they're going to put the poles so that they're not in the way of wings. And so that's moving forward. We had a culvert out in the middle of the grounds that had washed away. It was a large, about a four-foot, four or five-foot culvert that, in diameter, that was washing away around, and dirt was washing down in, and so flow was not happening as it should. But that repair took place, and we got an update on that, got to see the finished pictures. It was a pretty, we were expecting a much more expensive repair, and we're pleased that it came in right around $1,000, wasn't it? Yeah. So that was good. Had more talk regarding the turf runway. We'll be moving forward with seeding that to wheat for the winter time, just to keep erosion from occurring, and then next spring come back in with the final turf surface that's going to be there. We, turf runway is not open yet, so we're not, we haven't marked it yet for takeoff or landing or anything like that, so it is not open yet, but it is coming along. We talked about placing signage on the highway, consistent with the Alva signs that had been put in place by the Wayfinding Committee, the big brown signs on the nice poles. That was sent back for design consideration, and so we'll come back to the next meeting with design options and move forward from there. And we accepted a donation, $2,500 for a sprinkler system, routine, kind of like what we do here sometimes. And then considered a couple of different options for painting the hang, or the terminal building, sent that back for more, I guess further defining the scope of work that needed to be completed. We ended up with two quotes on that project that were about $9,000 apart, so the scope of work was quite a bit apart as well, so we're going to refine that scope of work that we want to have done and go back out and ask for quotes on that and move forward after that. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the airport meeting. All right, thank you. Next item is the Water and Sewer Committee Meeting. Mr. Stelling, you have a report to share with us?
Yes, we met and we come to discuss what we had, oh, we had our budget retrieved, priorities and stuff, went over that. Update on current projects, the Patel projects that's out east of town, and Young Street tank farm project, which we're going to have more on that tonight. We talked about placing the water line, the Valley View addition, some of the options. Talked about wanting to try to get to the point where we have a five-year plan to where we can keep updating clean vehicles and different things to where we can just go on the rotation. Discussed the well field down there, about some telemetry, about trying to update some of that to where we could get more correct knowledge of what's going on at the time, whether or not not always have to send someone down to find out what's going wrong if something, if something happens. I believe that's about it. Brandon, if you have anything to add that I missed, or Joe Don, any questions?
Well, the only other thing that we talked about that wasn't a part of the agenda was the sewer line coming in to address behind Walmart and coming up behind those.
Yeah, the tail project, yeah.
Yeah, the, oh shoot, the MIA and that bank is there.
Any questions for Mr. Stelling? Thank you, Randy. Next item is the Public Safety Committee Meeting on October 11, 2017. Mr. Vincent is not here. Mr. Eckhart, Ms. Hamilton, would you care to make a report?
Yeah, Mr. Eckhart, I got to skip that one, too.
That's right.
It was very interesting, very interesting. We talked about the safety hazard on 417 Oklahoma Boulevard. It was a tree, branches sticking out over, blocking the roadside, the street side light, and so they're going to get that taken care of. And then the part I really enjoyed was the EMS, the police, and the fire. They talked about their departments, they told what was going on with all of them, all the updates that they're doing, all the new projects, all the new ideas that they have going on to help their department work better for the city of Alva, for the citizens of Alva. We talked about collection again, on how to collect some of the fines and the cost to do on this. And then Joe Don talked to us about the five-year capital replacement plan, and I think it's more about that going to go on today, too. Lot of interesting things. Talked about hydrants, water hydrants, how they can help do those.
Gosh, I didn't bring my paper. Anything else they have?
We also talked about the storm sirens and the progress that they've made in that department. They've raised a couple of the poles. I have pictures here of some of those in police projects. We talked about the recommendations of moving the siren by Young Street to another location and then potentially adding a siren to get better coverage. They added length to some of the poles, are going to provide a lot better coverage. The RF system is almost in place, from what I gathered from that meeting. They've got a lot of the hardware done. I can't remember what they said they were waiting on to actually make a switch.
But the majority of the sirens, all of them are working now. They can either rebuild or they're new, and all the sirens are in place and ready to go.
What's the cost of adding another siren?
Cost to add a new siren is probably going to be right in the neighborhood of $25,000, $30,000.
But the one up on Young Street, up on the tower, is a short one, so it doesn't go out as far, but they would, because that building probably isn't going to be there any longer than it's sitting on. So they took on its set, so they're going to have to redo something on that anyway. And that Northwestern has two sirens, but we're not hooked up to those. And they're going to change from one form to where they can just, what, computerize it more.
Well, it's radio control, not phone line.
Not phone line.
And that's one of the ways we're paying for that project, is that we'll be able to do away with a lot of dedicated phone lines, and the saving, the dollar savings we're going to make off of doing away with those phone lines will make up the, make up the difference on the cost of doing the rehab that we've been doing.
We also discussed some more traffic issues around Washington School, which Chief Orca said he was going to be on that one, so.
He'll take care of that.
But there's still additional issues there, faced with Barnes Street and so forth, and people going the wrong way during buses, things of that nature, so he's looking more into that and is going to, said he'd take care of it.
Thank you, Brian. I have one here, Chris is on that committee, and I.
When Chris was on that one, yeah.
I was going to say, I missed one. Got called out for another one.
I know, I got.
It was a new one.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, it was night, it was night. Sorry, Chris. We missed you.
Sorry for the confusion.
We missed you.
And I've been to so many lately that I, yeah, they're all running together. Where they talked about moving along. If they, what they talked about is if they go further east, they'll be able to have a little bit better coverage of the south side town.
By Bill Douglas, additional there.
Any other questions for either Mr. Wallace or Mrs. Hamilton? All right, thank you, guys. Next item is the Finance Committee Meeting, October 16, 2017. Dr. Hannaford?
We reviewed and approved claims, we've seen the reports of the large claims that we have this month, asphalt was about $65,000. We had two payments of debt service, one of $22,000 and $15,000. Truck repairs, nearly $7,000. We reviewed our cash or investments, our investment's up slightly to almost $2.5 million. We talked briefly about our budget for street repair and street maintenance, and how we're going to hold off on the remaining budget we have to look at some possible grant, matching our funds that we have, and Joe Don might talk a little bit more about that later. And then we also discussed a little bit about the water tank project, and if we continue to move forward, how that might impact our debt service. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or direct them to Joe Don for any help.
Council have any questions regarding the Finance Committee Report? Thank you, Bo. Next item is the City Management Report. It's, we're getting a lot of the committee meetings in here this month, but I think we're going to have them all accomplished. I've been, I don't think I've missed any yet, but working on getting all those taken care of this month, and I'm trying to be present for all of those. I do know that, I'll go ahead and report for a couple of you that attended the OML meetings in Woodward this past, last week, so appreciate you guys going to that. I think it's important that you continue to do that. I learn so much when I go to the municipal league events, and I hope you guys do as well. On that note, OML will be bringing their leadership class here the first week of December, so we'll be hosting, we've hosted two years in a row.
This will be the second year.
This will be the second year in a row, and it's.
But it'll be the third time we've hosted, but the second year in a row.
Okay. And they really enjoy coming to Alva for one of their leadership trainings, and so we really enjoy hosting them. That, like I said, that's coming up.
Kelly, we worked on that today in City Count, in the chamber, and getting it all planned, and we're going to work on giving table, giving away things as much as we can, because that's what they really enjoyed last time, last year. So if anybody, as we call these people, please do.
Last year they had a really great experience. The university singers came and performed for them, and of course, they're incredible. And not, you know, and everything else was a good event as well. I have on the agenda several appointments for you guys to approve today, and other than that, same, kind of the same routine, continue to do a radio show with KALV on Tuesday mornings, try to give an update on city business, and so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you. Next item is the City Business Managers' Report.
Well, we'll start off a little bit with talking about some of the projects we've got going on. One of them is the, the street season is coming to an end for this, for this year, this calendar year. We have spent about $150,000 out of the $213,000 that we had, that we've had budgeted, so that leaves us with about $63,000. We've got two projects that are, we've committed to. One of them is Seventh Street, there's, we've been milling it up, and we're going to try to, we're going to get that asphalted this year as soon as possible. The other project is to pay for half the concrete in front of, on College Avenue in conjunction with the bank, Bank Central. We've worked kind of, we're working a deal with Bank Central in that what we're going to do is we're going to go in there and do the demolition, tear it up. We're going to pay for our half-street of the concrete. The bank had already planned on paying for half of the street to be reconcreted, and then they'll do all the finish work as part of that project. And that'll provide us a good, good street. I have instructed the street department to hold off on any other street repairs and spending any more of our street and alley money for this year, because we, I have learned of a couple of grant opportunities, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, for streets that have been deemed either minor, ulterior, or urban major county collector streets. And they've got some grant funds out there that'll help us get some of those streets resurfaced and rebuilt, and I'm sure that $63,000 is going to be needed for grant, for matching funds. So as the, as the grant comes, the grant program comes into a clearer focus, and we'll know what streets we're going to be doing, or when we can get fund, try to get funded, and we can work forward with that. I did have a meeting, a teleconference, two weeks ago concerning the upper payment limit, supplemental payment program. That program had been put on hold. The Oklahoma Health, Oklahoma Health had decided they were not going to apply for reconsideration because once they'd been declined this last time. There'd been some representatives from cities and nursing homes, and one state senator expressed their disappointment with the health committee about not reconsidering application. So they, the health committee is now backstepped a little bit and decided that they're going to reconsider that. Probably will not be a resubmital of an application, but it will be a whole new application. There are a lot of communities that are doing, the other communities that are doing this, we are probably the only community that has not actually gotten anybody under contract, but our legal advisor has instruct, you know, has advised us to kind of hold off a little bit on these, on these steps and on these processes. It will not take us long to get people under contract when, when this, this whole project comes into clearer focus. We've got contracts that are tentatively made, because they've done all that, they've done the majority of this work for the hospital, when the hospital thought that they were going to be able to be the initiator of the grant. So we're, it's a long way of saying, I guess we're still in a holding pattern on it. I will talk a little bit about the Fire Burn House project, but it's also pretty good that we've got a fire marshal here, and it's been a pet project of his. It is almost finished. They, we've got a two-story burn house, a burned car, an oil tank battery for burn simulation already in place. They're, they're working on completing a pipe fence, trying to get a classroom added, hopefully trying to get the addition of a railcar for the simulation of a railroad accident, and putting out that fire. And the one thing that they have asked for me, asked me, to see if they could get some additional funds to complete the fence and rehab the old town, the old training structure that is, that we've been utilizing for years. They've asked for about $15,000, and we're kind of massaging budgets to see where that might be able to come from. More than likely, it'll, it'll come out of our contingency account and transferred over to the fire project, but that has not been finalized yet. Brian, would you like to add anything about your burn house?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about it. Won't take too much of your time. As you guys well know, that was a $200,000 grant from Share Trust, and done a pretty good job of making some connections and stretching that money as, as far as I can stretch it. I mean, if you guys look out there, all that pipe was donated by Sand Ridge. Woods County did all the dirt workforce out there, City Public Works, the street department, which is great, they poured all my concrete for me, saved the labor on that. Got my guys out there, fire guys tied all that rebar in. You know, we got a lot of businesses in this town, really. You know, we've got a lot of businesses in this town really came to help this project out. And what's really nice about it is there's about 60 firefighters throughout three different counties that's redged out to me, that wants me to teach classes for them. And if you guys don't know, I teach for the VOTAC. Been traveling to different towns on my off time and teaching fire classes. You know, taught a little bit for OSU Fire Service Training on that. But those guys don't want to travel a lot. They'd rather travel to Alva. I mean, yeah, they can go to Ena, they can go to Woodward, but those travel times are too far. I just got back from a meeting in Stillwater. We're going to certify our facility here to make this an OSU Fire Service Training certified site. What should, what is really nice is, is that I'm, I'm bidding for next year's Regional Fire School to come to Alva, Northwest Regional Fire School. Northwest Regional Fire School this year is in El Reno, and that's not Northwest. That's central to me. El Reno's a good place, but we want to bring them here. The last time that we've had Regional Fire School was in 2006. One thing that they said is we didn't have a burn building. Next thing they said, we didn't have enough classrooms. Now we got both. They said we didn't have enough motels. Check. You know, we're, we're sitting right there to where we can be competitive now. It's been in Woodward, now it's in El Reno, and I'm competing for Alva. Hopefully, we're going to start running firefighter-one classes through the VOTAC up here, and bringing those people in to our community, spending those dollars, getting us that tax revenue, staying in our motels. Some of the other things that may not quite be transparent is, you know, Burlington Northern Railroad has been sending us all over the United States. They've been giving us monies to go up to Pueblo, Colorado, to what's called Cersei Training Facility. I've been there myself, teaches us to fight railcar fires, because they're going to start moving a lot of crude by rail. One thing that we have just north of Alva here is two hazmat railroad lines within five blocks of the fire station. They sent us to College Station, Texas, to learn about liquid natural gas. They're going to start running their locomotives to save a billion dollars in diesel expenditures to run it off LNG. They're test trialing that through our lines right now on that. So they've, they've been spending that money out on us. We want to bring that back, just like the tank battery fires. Every time lightning strikes, we have one go-up, okay? The cost of fighting the tank battery fire, you know, is quite expensive. I mean, oilfield companies do pay us back for what we use out there, but we're trying to keep people out of the product, do proper firefighting techniques, what's called finished foam, and we're going to be able to deliver that to people around here. And it's my understanding, the closest one like we're building is going to be College Station, Texas. So that's something that other places don't have, that we got here by the cooperation with Sandridge, and they've been great. So that's a little bit about that. Catch me? I've got plenty more to talk about. I've got a lot more ideas. Just time and effort, a little bit of money, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. As far as the finances for this, for the City of Alva go, we were, we're really starting to look, look a little bit better than what we were last year. If we look at our sales tax, we are 17.39% at the end of September, above where we were at same time a year ago. Once we, we did receive our, we have received our October collections. Our October collections are about $8,000 less than what they were for October of last year, and that gives us a percentage of about 11.86 for an increase. So sales tax is looking relatively good. Done a little bit of research on this, and it's kind of amazing to me that it wasn't from areas that, or it didn't appear to be from areas that I would expect. It's a combination of areas, a lot of little areas that have increased. If we're looking at our NCAIS codes, it's some of the minor areas that have brought in that increase. Our motor vehicle tax and gas excise tax, we've received about 26.3% of the budget at the end of September. So we're right about on target there. Our utility billing is about 3, about 3.2% higher than it was this time last year at the end of September. Of course, we did enact a resolution to raise rates at that time. But before we raised our rates, our utility collections were 5, 5.5% below the same timeframe last year. So the rate increase has helped out tremendously. We have had, we've, we've made about $137,000, $138,000 in principal debt payments. We're paying about $18,000 in interest. City, City still owns about $3.1 million in debt coverage right now. Capital improvements, we've spent about $587,000 out of a $3.1 million budget to date. Sirens, we've already covered, baseball structures, most of this other stuff we've already covered. So a few things that have come up since the Finance Report and the Managers' Report went out. Get everybody to mark, tentatively mark December 1st. That's a Friday. We are trying to schedule a City Christmas party at the Moose Lounge on that day. Right now, the tenet of menu is chicken fried steak and another meat, salad, mashed potatoes, green beans, rolls, iced tea, soda, water. We're, we are in the process of firming that date up. Once we have it firmed up, invitations will go out to everybody with an RSVP request. We received last, late last week, we received a application for, not an application, an invitation for the NWSU Foundation Donor Appreciation Dinner. If council members would like to attend, please let me know so I can get you, get you registered. I need to know by the 18th to get you registered if you would like to attend that dinner. I want, another thing I thought it would be interesting, that if I went over, at the last council meeting, I asked everybody to take a stability test. Annual, and we'll start doing this annually. The last time we did it was in January of 2016. Based on your scores for the, for the City of Alva, we've, we've increased our score from a 65 to a 75. The same test was given to department heads and staff. The increase was from 62 to 74. There's still some, are some areas that I feel like, you know, that we can, you know, all areas would still improve. The lowest area we have is public image. It did not increase, it stayed at a 6. Crisis management stayed at 7. Employees remain constant at 8. All other areas increased, there were no areas that had decreased. And I thought that was, you know, for an 18-month, 19-month window, I thought that was pretty good. But we will start doing that on an annual basis and reporting on it annually. I haven't checked lately as to who, who, where we have on our council taking the test or the classes to apply for our $6,000, but I expect that we'll be able to do that, make that, have that resolution by next council meeting so we can get that, that's kind of an easy $6,000 to get. Yeah, it's from OMAD, yes. It's OMAD dollars. Then with that, I'd end my Managers' Report. Be happy to ask any questions you may have.
On sales tax, how much can you attribute to, like, internet sales, which you talked about, you know, as they kicked in and more?
Actually, I haven't, the Amazon sales, I haven't seen a big increase in that. I haven't seen near the increase I was expecting in that. But we, it has increased a little bit, and it's been growing a little bit every month. But it's not, it doesn't fall within the areas that, where we saw the increase. That would, that would be falling in our retail areas, and this, the biggest part of the increases were from areas other than retail.
Are there any other questions from council members? Well, thank you, Joe Don. Please be sure to thank your staff for all the hard work that they did. Item seven is Discussion and Action on Ordinance Number 2017-003, Creating Article 8 of Chapter 20 of the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Creating a Capital Reserve Fund, Establishing the Fund's Purpose, Providing for Fund Expenditures in accordance with Long-Term Capital Plans, Providing Procedure for Use of Funds in Existent Circumstances, Providing for Repealer, Codification, and Severability. We've been discussing this in Finance Committee as well as the other committees, as part of some of the reports that we had here. In, in the most basic terms, this is where we turn a page from funding what we need in terms of capital purchasing a year at a time to where we start funding several years out, based on a plan, a strategy, for knowing what our needs are going to be beyond the current budget year. We would like to have this set up similar to the way the Stability Fund Ordinance is set up, and that's the way Joe Don's been working on this for some time now, trying to get this prepared for us. I'll let Joe Don explain a little more if he chooses, but essentially, that's what we're looking at.
I mean, you can think about this as funding your depreciation, where we are set up five years from now. It takes our focus, especially at budget retreat, away from what do we need next year to what do we need five years from now. We, we start funding those projects now. If at, you know, at any time, you know, we all know things happen, especially to equipment. We may have items that last, that don't need to be replaced in the, in five years that we have scheduled. Doesn't mean we have to replace them. They get to stay on the list for maybe another year, but there are obviously going to be things that we have planned that would be further out, that crater on us, that we need to buy immediately. And it would be, allow us to have funds set in place to do that, and not be wondering where we're going to get the funds, or have, you know, hopefully, you know, we can work it in such so that the next time we are needing to replace a major distribution line or something, or a major water tower, water storage tank, we're set up where we may not, you know, may not have to borrow to me, two and a half million dollars if we start planning on it today for that replacement at the end of that life, at the, at the, at the end of that life. It is a good, it will, it, obviously, for the first five years, it will not be easy for us to do, because not only are we going to be funding that year's immediate needs, but we will also be funding needs for five and six years out. I do, I expect that it won't be, you know, it'll, eventually, after five, six, seven years, it'll become easier for us, because we will eventually move to funding the, you know, having the funds in place for the majority of our big capital needs. But it'll, it'll be, it'll be a, it'll be a rough first couple of years. If this agenda, if this item is approved tonight, the rest of this year will be spent on, the rest of the time this year will be spent developing that five, that first five-year plan. We'll be working through committees and through the council, but it'll be spent for, that'll be the, the laying the groundwork for, for our budget retreat. And that'd be about all I'd have to say, and just encourage you to pass the ordinance.
I think this is an important next step in the long-term financial stability and our ability to respond to our community's needs. I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I just, I want to clarify first that the funding of this fund, if passed, would begin next year. The remaining of this budget year would be just to establish that five-year plan.
Yes. We would not be, we would not be, we are not planning on funding this year. Now, should we have funds at the end of the year where we, where we could either overfund our stability, or if we could put the seed money back for this, this year? Yeah, we would certainly look at doing that, but that is not part of the plan at this time.
And also, this, passing this as an ordinance makes it to where we can't rate this money, it has to be used for capital improvement. We can't just rainy day fund it because something else comes up that's not capital, is that correct?
Pretty much. It takes, to use any of the funds, let me get back to council approval. It has, it has to come back for council approval. It's based on a multi-year plan.
In subsection E of 220-300, talks about supermajority vote.
Yes, yeah.
By the council, which would allow, if there was exigent circumstances, the council vote to be able to use those funds in another source, another place.
Yes.
He said a supermajority.
Super, supermajority of the council.
Six.
So it takes, six out of the eight, yes.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2017-003, Article, Creating Article 8 of Chapter 20 of the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Creating a Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to approve ordinance number 2017-003, establishing the Capital Reserve Fund as identified in the agenda item. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Full clerk, please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think that's going to be real important for us moving forward. Item eight is Discussion and Action on the Reappointment of Jason Gasford to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October of 2022. I've spoken with Mr. Gasford and his willingness to continue serving in that capacity. I think he's done a, a great job for our hospital board over the time he's been there, which is some time now, but he is doing a great job. He is willing to continue serving, and therefore, I recommend for reappointment Jason Gasford, and would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Jason Gasford to the Alva Hospital Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, second by Mrs. Hamilton, to reappoint Jason Gasford to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October. to the Alva Hospital Authority for a term ending October 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item nine is discussion and action on reappointment of Greg Glass to the Alva Recreation Complex Board, also for a term, for a term ending in October 22, 2022. Again, I've spoken with Mr. Glass. He is willing to continue serving and I have asked him to continue doing so if the council would approve it. So therefore I recommend for reappointment Greg Glass to the Alva Rec Park Board.
Motion to reappoint Greg Glass to the Alva Rec Park Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to reappoint Greg Glass to the Alva Recreation Complex Board for a term ending October 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 10, discussion and action on the reappointment of Troy Smith to the Alva Recreation Complex Board for a term ending October 2022. Again, Dr. Smith has been serving as chairman in the most recent, his most recent last couple of years and he is willing to continue to serve as long as we have him to do so and therefore I recommend reappointment of Dr. Troy Smith to the Alva Rec Complex Board.
Motion to reappoint Troy Smith to the Alva Recreation Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Wallace, to reappoint Troy Smith to the Alva Recreation Complex Board for a term ending October 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Item 11 is a discussion and action on the appointment of Lynn Reed to the Alva Cemetery Board for an unexpired term ending next June 2018. This is a position that was held by Ken Clark, right?
Yes.
Yes. And I have had a conversation with Mr. Reed. He's contacted me. I've had actually a couple of people contact me on his behalf to say that they would like to see him serve on the cemetery board. He is interested and he shared with me that his great-grandparents, his grandparents, his parents, and he all have lots at our cemetery and he's very interested in the continued operations of the cemetery and making it as, as good as it can be. So with that, I am very compelled to recommend the appointment of Lynn Reed to the cemetery board for the unexpired term.
I'll motion to appoint Lynn Reed to the cemetery board.
Second.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, second by Mary Hamilton, to appoint Lynn Reed to the Alva Cemetery Board for an unexpired term ending in June 2018. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action to request the refund of the unused fiscal year 2014-2015 loss fund from OMAG in the amount of $22,884.70. Essentially, we did good and I believe, Joe Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is because we didn't have excessive claims.
That's right.
With our liability, we get to take this money back.
That is correct. From our, from our, this is money that was held in a lost fund for our workers' compensation and because it is, because it wasn't utilized, there were several different ways that we have, we can take that money back. This is the way we have historically done it. Last year, I think we had a $13,000 thereabouts refund. This year it's $22,000.
Are there any questions for Joe Don? If not, I would entertain a motion to request this refund.
Make a motion to request refund of unused FYI 15 loss fund from OMAG in the amount of $22,884.70.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Hannaford, second by Mr. Sherman, to request the refund of the unused fiscal year 1415 loss fund from OMAG in the amount of $22,884.70. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
And I know I mentioned it earlier, but that's a direct reflection of the employees and the, their cognizance for, for safe work practices. So please pass along our appreciation for that.
Sure, we will.
Item 13 is discussion and action on the placement of an LPG storage tank in excess of 100 gallons within the city limits. Joe Don, would you like Fire Marshal to give a report?
I would, I think I'd just ask Fire Marshal, but it is his, it's at his request that when this item is here, it's for the, it's for the burn, the burn.
Burn facility. Well, our ordinance states exactly what it is and I, I don't think we should treat ourselves any different than we would make anybody else within the city. So that's the reason why I asked for this to be placed on the agenda because based off our ordinance, you guys have to approve that tank to be set within the city when it's about. So what it is, it'll be a propane tank, 1,000 gallons, filled to 80 percent. The reason why we had to have something that large is based off of our props. They have to have enough product in there to make up the gas to feed these props at the proper BTU ranges. Looked at 500 gallons, it wouldn't work, so we had to be at the 1,000 gallons because that's what the tank battery prop will be fed off of. We'll be pushing a lot of, about 3.5 million BTUs towards it to try to make up that fire. What we actually see was crude. So I went to Joe Don, asked him to put it on the agenda because that's what the ordinance says. So if you guys have any questions on it, we're, we're building a control valve system out there and we kind of got to follow some guidelines too when building training facilities. NFPA 1402 and 1403 tells us how we have to build it. We're building it to those designs. We don't see any issues. It's away from the props. We'll have an automatic stop if something were to happen built into it. Relatively safe and I mean, most training facilities use propane because it's cheaper and readily available. So if you guys have any questions on it, because that's on a concrete pad right there by 14th Street, just inside the gate. If you guys haven't been by to look, I encourage you to go look, see the progress. Always makes me excited, so.
Council have any questions for the Fire Marshal? Well, thank you, Brian. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to place a 1,000-gallon LPG tank within city limits at our training facility located at 240 North 14th Street.
One second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, second by Mrs. Hamilton, to place 1,000-gallon propane, 1,000-gallon propane tank within the city limits at 240 North 14th, fire training facility. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to have us move item 15 and 16 up because we're going to have to recess before we consider item 14. So item 15 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody that's here with us this evening has comments that they'd like to share or inquiries that they'd like to ask, we will give you a couple of minutes to voice that to the council. If you do, please tell us who you are and make sure you sign the, the list at the podium. Any public comment this evening? Well, thank you all for being here. Next item 16 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members have anything to share apart from the city council meeting? All right. We are going to take a recess, I guess, from the city council meeting and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. When we're ready, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Benson? Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 18, 2017, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $70,649.79 and payroll expenses of $67,193.62. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Sherman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item six is, excuse me, item five, discussion and action on resolution number 2017-010, adopting a customer service policy for the Alva Utility Authority. We have a number of requirements that we need to take care of in order to apply for funding from the OWRB for the tank farm that's going in out at Young Street. This is one of them. This policy would be considered best practice and gives us guidelines for making decisions with regard to our water customers. Joe Don, do you have anything to add?
No, we did, we wouldn't want the council to think we did not have a policy in place for utility services. We did and do, but it did not specifically address hardship cases and that's what the Department of Environmental Equalities wanted to see from us. This policy does address that and is a, is a function of getting our water line.
Council have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this policy.
I'll motion to approve resolution 2017-011.
010.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I got ahead, ahead of myself. 010.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters to approve resolution number 2017-010, adopting a customer service policy for the Alva Utility Authority. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Sherman.
I'm sorry. I thought it, I apologize.
It's not your fault.
You made sure the minutes are correct, that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think I stated it. It's my fault. Item six, consideration and action with respect to resolution number 2017-011, agreeing to file application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program, with the loan proceeds being for the purpose of financing water system improvements, serving the City of Alva, Oklahoma, approving professional services agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto. Joe Don?
Well, I will explain what I think, the way I think this resolution works. Chris Wolf from Municipal Finance Services is also here to help answer any questions that you may have. But basically this resolution, although we've been talking about borrowing money from Oklahoma Resources, Resources Board for quite a while, and you authorized me to go out and make that application or start that application process, this resolution is what is needed to actually say that you agree that we need to be making the application with Oklahoma Water Resources Board. It also approves professional services agreements we have with Mr. Wolf's firm and the bond advisors that we have, Alan Brooks and his group, and it approves those professional services agreements. Did I miss anything on that, Chris?
Sounds good.
Does the council have any questions on this?
I can speak just for a little bit.
Yeah, please.
Just to give you guys some information so we don't go into. Thanks, sir. Well, good evening. Good on introducing me. I'm Chris Wolf. I'm with Municipal Finance Services. We've represented the authority on a few transactions over the years. We were the advisors on your 2014 notes that you all issued for utility system improvements. As Joe said, he was seeking a water board loan and, and working through the application and we've been kind of working hand in hand with the city and the, the Water Resources Board in getting this put on the application. This agenda item just formalizes the actual application itself. The Water Board is looking to put you all on their November 1st agenda for approval and to do that, they actually need formal approval of the application. We have been talking with the analysts. There have been some preliminary conversations back and forth. They have reviewed these documents or these, they've reviewed the data. They have everything ready to go on their end. They're just awaiting formal approval by the council. The report I brought, I won't get too deep into the specifics. I won't take too much of your time. I can answer any questions you'd like, but I would like to touch on a few things. This first page is our estimated loan sizing. We are requesting $2,635,000 from the Water Board, 2.5 million of that being just your engineering costs as well as construction costs and then the cost of issuance. Those are the professional services agreements we'll be signing. That's bond counsel, local counsel, our fee, and then a trustee bank fee that's paid in order for them to handle this transaction. These costs of issuance are, are paid on a contingency basis, meaning when the loan closes, that's when these costs are paid. There's, they're part of the loan proceeds. But yeah, if the loan doesn't close, then the only thing you guys are out is the $500 application fee to the Water Board for them to process the application. Get to our next page. This is This is a payment schedule, it's a lot of tiny numbers, but I just wanted to show the specifics of the transaction. We've got about thirty years of principal payments. An attractive feature of the Water Board's program is they allow deferment of principal payment during the construction phase, in which you will only pay interest on the amount that you have drawn down from the loan. At that point, once the phase is completed, you will begin your principal payments, and we've estimated a year-long construction phase. I think Bill Myers has estimated a little less than that, but we put it at a year just for conservative purposes. But we show thirty years of payments, it matures at September fifteenth of twenty forty-eight. We have it at a three percent interest rate currently, this is just kind of a conservative number we've put in. I ran the rate calculation on Friday, and it was at a two seventy-five. Just for a frame of reference, about a month ago, it was a two seventy-five, and at the beginning of this month, it was at a two eighty-one. So, we've seen a little bit of fluctuation, about five basis points, nothing major. We don't anticipate anything major going on, but of course, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't see any future large movements ahead. But another feature of the loan program with the Water Resources Board is they allow us to lock in the interest rate ten days before closing in order to avoid any volatility in the rates. So, once we have a formal closing date set pending authority authorization of the application and the transaction, we can contact the Water Board and set the interest rate ten days before closing. And once it's set, it's set, and that's it. I've assumed a November eighth closing date on here, but we don't have a formal date. Average payments are about a hundred and thirty-three thousand. If you were to get the two seventy-five interest rate, if rates held in for us for a couple of weeks, your average payment's like a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So, it's about four thousand less a year, and so it's about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand less in interest over the life of the loan. But once that rate is set, we will have a final AM schedule to present to you all. This next page here, this is your debt coverage analysis. Oh, I'm sorry, I have too many pages. We've got our summary of obligations here. These are all the existing obligations that the authority has that are using your water, sewer, and solid waste revenues. The Series twenty seventeen DWSRF loan is being proposed to be issued on a parity basis with these loans, meaning they use the same security for their repayment. I've highlighted the year twenty twenty-five here, that is the maximum annual payment for any given year for the aggregate debt service. We use that to calculate our debt coverage ratio. Part of the Water Board's program is that they require a one point two five times debt coverage ratio, you guys probably have that on your fourteen A and B loans, to maintain your utility revenues, a hundred and twenty-five percent of your debt payments, your net utility revenues. We'll go to the next page, we'll see, that's not really a problem. I have your unaudited fiscal year seventeen numbers. Barring any major adjustments, you guys had a pretty solid year. One thing I want to bring attention to is this additional rate increase highlight. When we spoke with Joe Don about a month ago, he told us that your rate increases that you made in August were anticipating to generate at least forty thousand dollars a month. I pulled some data, I pulled two months, September of sixteen and March of seventeen, I've run them through our model. Your billing system is about ninety-nine percent accurate, which of course, that's about as good as it can get, and after plugging in the new rates, it's spot on, at least forty thousand, and those are two months where water usage is not really at its peak. So, I've plugged in four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of additional anticipated revenues. That's just because you guys' rates went into effect August thirty-first, or they were approved August thirty-first, so you only have ten months or so of that year to get those additional rates. That being said, I mean, they supplied it about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which brings your total gross revenues to projected three million for our debt coverage purposes. On the application that Joe Don had sort of preparing, he showed this increase in operations and maintenance costs, I'm sure he got that number from Bill Myers, about a hundred and twenty thousand. I'm not sure if that's just an initial year's worth of increase in costs, or if that's average, you know, for the life of the new towers or tanks, but just assuming that it will be an additional hundred and twenty thousand into perpetuity, it still leaves you with about a million and a half worth of revenues for seventeen, or projected seventeen, eighteen. Your maximum annual debt service is that four fourteen number that was on the previous page, which gives you guys a coverage of about three point four six times, which is well above the Water Board's minimum requirement for debt coverage. So, you guys are very proactive with your rates, I see, I know you've approved a four or five-year increase plan, ten percent every year, so for the foreseeable future, unless something crazy happens, the ability to incur this loan using these securities doesn't seem to be an issue. This last page is just a quick summary of everything we've gone over here. The OWRB anticipates the approval of this pending the authorization of it November first at their monthly meeting. Once the Water Board approves the actual loan, we'll have the closing date set, hopefully we'll have a rate locked in at that time. The requested loan amount is in the value of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty-year term from the end of the construction. Pretty much just goes over everything I've said. The only thing I do want to point out is the prepayment provision. As part of the loan program, the only way that this loan is prepayable is through the Water Board's consent. There isn't a predetermined call date or a redemption date for any of these payments, so if the authority would like to pursue any refinancing down the road, which say it's in the two seventy-five, two eighty range for a thirty-year loan, that's, can't really imagine it getting low enough to where a refund would make any sense, but if it did, it would require the Water Board's consent, you could not just go out and do that independently. So, on the agendas tonight, we have a bit of a plate full here, I'll just go over. We're going to formally authorize the application, so the Water Board can put you all on their monthly agenda. We are going to approve the transaction itself on the authority side. The authorization of the application also authorizes our contract, local council, bond council, as well as the application fee, and then after those are approved, if they're approved, we will approve it at the city as the beneficiary of the trust. So, if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Council have any questions for Mr. Wolf? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero one one agreeing to file application with the OWRB for financial assistance.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, the second one. Mr. Sherman to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero one one agreeing to file application with the OWRB for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan proceeds being for the purpose of financing water system improvements, serving the city of Alva, Oklahoma, approving professional services agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item seven, another mouthful. Consideration and action with respect to resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one two of the Alva Utility Authority, the authority approving and authorizing a drinking water SRF loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the total aggregate principal amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, approving the issuance of a promissory note in a total aggregate principal amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, secured by a pledge of revenues and authorizing its execution, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement for a drinking water SRF loan, designating a local trustee and approving and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a security agreement, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract pertaining to certain water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste management systems, approving and authorizing execution of a parity agreement, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
This is a long way of saying, yes, you want to borrow two point six million dollars. You're authorizing the amount that we want to borrow.
That's exactly right. This is just authorizing the actual loan itself pending approval by the Water Board at their monthly meeting.
On the larger price for double construction, how do we know that that's, until we put it up with bids, how do we know?
Well, that's, we've arrived at that rate through engineers' estimates.
We don't know.
I mean, we don't know for sure. We have, we have taken into consideration everything that we normally would take into consideration in going out for this type of a project. We've talked with, there's only about four or five different, my understanding, there's only about four or five different companies out there that'll do this type of construction. We've talked with them, seen bids from them in past projects to kind of determine whether or not we're in the ballpark, but that's, that's what we've done.
So, in the event that the bid comes in over or under this amount?
If it comes in under this amount, we actually don't borrow as much money.
That's right. It's a lot of credit, so what you do is you just borrow what you use. So, if bids come in under the actual loan amount, then, you know, borrow however much you need for that. If they come in over, the authority will agree to cover any excess cost from that. As far as last week, we have, bond council has talked with Bill Myers, the engineer, we've been talking for the past month about getting updated estimates, and as far as I know, last Friday, these are the estimates that he is still comfortable with bringing to the Water Board, understanding that bids are not in hand yet, and that he has not made any cost adjustments more or less in the past thirty days, and he has been working hand in hand with DEQ on this, I know for at least the past, I mean, every day for probably the past two weeks.
And we, in developing our initial dollar amount, we, Bill and I work very closely as far as determining rates and determining how much money we felt we were really going to need to get this done.
So, could that figure be, you know, sometimes, you know, construction and then there are unforeseen things, so, you know, even up till they end the construction, maybe, you know, an overrun or something, is it?
Well, we have built into it the amount that we're asking for, contingency amount for some of, for some of those unexpected costs. I was going to look here to see if I had that, that documentation in my folder here.
What we were just provided is a contingency amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Yeah, the contingency is set at ten percent of the total construction cost, so it's a little bit of fluff in case something comes in my, I know that he was looking at potentially getting new estimates after the storms, the hurricanes, I guess, of the past, you know, month, that was earlier this month, and he instructed bond council us to just keep the estimates the same, he feels confident, and this is the, this is the price.
Is increasing borrowed amount an option?
At this point, the amount requested from the Water Board has essentially been set as far as their purposes. If we were to increase the amount to borrow, we would have to.
Reapply.
Reapply, in a sense, we'd have to provide them a new set of information with the increased loan amount.
That makes sense, sometimes we gotta hate somebody basically for, you know, basically come out here to do.
We have taken, we, in our initial bids, we did, we did take that into consideration.
I, I had visited with the mayor, just to have a little context, in Indiana, and they're completing a project at this time that's similar in size and scope for considerably less money than what we're looking at. So, I would hope that our bids come in closer to what they're experiencing, but, you know, they're closer to the middle of the state, and they're right along the interstate, and all these things that we're not. We, it would seem that we've taken that into consideration, but there's, we won't know until we get to business.
That's right.
If there isn't any further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one two, the Alva Utility Authority approving and authorizing a drinking water SRF loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in total aggregate principal amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Sherman, the second from Mr. Winters, approving resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one two of the Alva Utility Authority approving and authorizing a drinking water SRF loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the total aggregate amount, principal amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, according to the rest of the language in the agenda item. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Well, we will adjourn the Alva Utility Authority meeting. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
In return to item number fourteen, do I have the roll call back in?
Nope.
Okay. Return to item fourteen on the city council meeting. Item fourteen is the, are you guys ready?
Ready.
Okay. Item fourteen is consideration and action with respect to resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one three of the city of Alva, Oklahoma, the city approving action taken by the Alva Utility Authority, the authority authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of its Series twenty seventeen drinking water SRF promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract pertaining to the water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste disposal systems, and containing other provisions related thereto.
And basically, basically what this, this agenda item does is as the city ratifies everything that you just did in the authority, so the thing of the city and the authority as being two separate entities, the authority went out and asked, is asking you, with the first two resolutions, to borrow the money, this is where you're saying, yes, it's okay as a city.
Are there any questions regarding this item? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Call motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one three.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Sherman, to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash zero one three of the city of Alva, Oklahoma, approving the action taken by the Alva Utility Authority, authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of its Series twenty seventeen drinking water SRF promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board as stated in, in the item number fourteen. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I think all of you understand how important that was to the future of our city, so we look forward to getting started on that project and making those changes and anxiously await whatever bids we would get. And we will, with that, close the Alva City Council meeting and open the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. To the clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Benson?
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda. In place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration in action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 18, 2017, and Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $25,483.96 and payroll expenses of $14,119.11. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mr. Eckhart to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.